I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the last commission meeting for the year 2015. And my name is Gary Cronz and I am the mayor of Shelton and proud to be the mayor of Shelton. We have our agenda before us, but we're going to change it just slightly because the judge is not in the house and he's the gentleman that's going to swear in the new commission. So, what we're going to do is just put that one off until the judge comes in.
You've got about one minute and a half.
Thirty seconds.
Before he'll be here?
We can count down.
He's coming down? Okay, then let's just relax and just wait for the judge to come in, then we don't have to switch. Come on in, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn this meeting over to the Honorable Judge George A. Steele and he's going to do the swearing-in for myself and the commissioners here. So, the meeting is yours, sir.
Okay. I want to start off with you, Mr. Mayor. Stand up.
Happy to do.
Raise your right hand. And just repeat after me. I, Gary H. Cronz.
I, Gary H. Cronz.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and confirm.
And affirm, my apologies.
Or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I am legally qualified to assume the office of City of Shelton Mayor.
And that I am legally qualified to assume the office of the City of Shelton Mayor.
That I will support the constitutional law of the United States and the state of Washington.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington.
Okay. And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay. And now you've got a approach, I'll have you sign and then I'll sign.
I actually have my own.
You have your words off? That's even better.
Looks like there's a couple of things on the first one.
All right.
Thank you very much, Judge.
First I have, with the Catherine Dow.
McDowell.
Catherine McDowell, my apologies.
That's all right.
Raise your right hand. If you'll repeat after me. I, Kathy McDowell.
I, Kathy McDowell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I am legally qualified to assume the office of City of Shelton Commissioner of Finance and Accounting.
That I am legally qualified to...
Assume the office.
Assume the office of...
City of Shelton Commissioner of Finance and Accounting.
City of Shelton Commissioner of Finance and Accounting.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will support the constitution and laws of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office.
I will faithfully and impartially...
Discharge the duty of this office.
Discharge the duty of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay. Go ahead and sign here.
Right here and the first name. Hey, Frank. Gary, thanks for coming out today. You didn't just come out for my swearing-in, did you? You had other things going on.
Okay, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Off for you, Dave.
We need a picture. Actually Tracy can picture too.
We'll take a picture after the commission.
Okay, well, okay. We want to share with the judges.
Where would you like me?
Oh, there you go.
You better stand a little.
It looks like you're still in the corner.
All right. There you go. Now I got the action shots.
If you mess it up, we all, in the same building, we can always get together later and say it.
It is not happy. It's fine.
Trust me, you don't want me to take your picture. I could have Sean sent it to you.
Hey, Gordon. All right. Hey, Gordon. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
All right, next on agenda is our weekly commission reports. Mr. Moore.
Okay, this week I just have a regular staff briefing and then on Thursday I will be here for the going-away thank you for Commissioner Olson. And that's it for this week.
All right, Commissioner Olson.
This is my last meeting, so I have no staff report and just congratulations to Kathy.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you very much.
And this is the last week of the year and last week of the month here, so I don't have any scheduled meetings this week either. And so that completes our reports. Next is a general public comment period for general public comment items, and so we allow the public to speak. Three-minute timeframe and we only have one person signed in at the moment. Mr. Toby Kevin, would you like to come up to the podium?
Toby Kevin, seven oh nine, Harris Buudry, Shelton. Want to recognize the service and dedication of Commissioner Mike Olson. He has served the people of Shelton superbly for four years. He's studied and worked to understand issues and how they affect all the members of the community. He has been one who values both the immediate situation but also considers the longer-term needs of the community. His courtesy, integrity, and ability to articulate complex issues sets a high standard for the incoming commission to match. As one who works in the community, Mike applaud you for your dedication and your service to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have another opportunity later in the meeting if anyone would like to speak at our other general public comment period. So, now we are moving forward with the consent agenda. Are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Appears we are. Could we please have that?
Consent agenda, vouchers numbered 10495 through 10526 in the amount of $68,923.65. The 2015 budget modification, a new server to support the new financial system.
Is our motion approved, the consent agenda as read?
I move we support the new... Last one's good. I move for approval of consent.
I second that motion.
There's a motion to second approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda passes. We have no old business at this time, but we do have three items under a new business. And the first will be an item called the Tree Protection Ordinance. And Steve Goins is going to present that to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We presented this draft ordinance a few weeks back. We circulated this for some comment. In general terms, this is a tree protection ordinance. It's part of a larger effort that will establish the city of Shelton as a tree city. It's over eighty tree cities in the state of Washington currently. And this particular piece is intended to help us to preserve and maintain our trees for public benefit. The ordinance lays out some processes where we would establish means to do that. As the ordinance itself says, we believe that these trees add value and character to the community and we'd like to do our best to help maintain those. These would sub a protocol, if you will, for that process. I should add that in the course of the comments, there was some distinction between how the tree development department would...
Sorry, that was Toby Kevin's time.
He's done speaking.
He's done speaking, now you've got more than three minutes.
On the second page of the draft ordinance, there's a purpose statement there at number E. And I provided two different versions of that, I believe, in the draft that's in your package today. And I think that the distinction there really lies in an approach to how we deal with maintaining trees as part of green infrastructure. Rather than looking at them as simply something that we can replace over time, whenever a root starts to buckle a sidewalk. To take the approach, maybe we can just simply do a repair of the sidewalk and maintain the tree for a longer period of time, assuming it's healthy, it's vigorous, it can grow in the spot it's in. And that's sort of, I think, a different way of looking at these kind of elements as a green resource, a green infrastructure resource moving forward. The other comments were incorporated into the draft ordinance and I think I understood or highlighted those, so you can see where those fit in. But I think we are generally in agreement, other than that piece of it, on how to move this forward, looking for direction to comment here.
Questions or comments?
Well, I, for one, would just say thank you very much for all the hard work on this ordinance. As you know, I've attended, every time I get a chance, I've attended the classes on the tree maintenance and considering trees part of our valuable infrastructure. And so I'm really interested in the question about E. And what is it that you're looking for from us?
The way that's worded generally describes what approach we would take for dealing with a tree that might be affecting infrastructure, such as a curved sidewalk, maybe underground pipe. And I think that in a larger sense, we want to try to avoid those kind of conflicts we can. But when they occur, I think there's a decision that needs to be made about whether we just simply replace the tree or we try to fix the infrastructure that may be bothering the curve or sidewalk and try to maintain the trees for a longer period of time. That's sort of the distinction of how it would be.
Okay, so in that case, it's more treating the tree as a piece of infrastructure as well and rather than just the tree always comes last?
Right.
Okay.
One thing to note is this is a, there's a public comment period on this specific issue. Usually, we allow the public, if you have an opinion on this, to weigh in at this time and then we can continue our discussion. Does anybody want to speak about this specific issue? And if...
I have a question.
Yeah, you can ask a question, go ahead.
Does this cover only public trees or does it cover trees on private, I mean, on your property?
This would cover trees in the public right-of-way or in parks, trees that are on basically city property or public property.
Okay. Is there any other comment from anybody? Please, just for protocol, if you could sign your name in. I think we have a special, do you have a special sheet on this or do we have? Okay, very good. Then just right here, you sign in.
Marilyn Bogler, 420 East Poplar. Just very briefly, I really urge you to adopt the version that says, yes, trees are part of the infrastructure. They take a lot longer to grow to maturity than it takes to replace a sidewalk. And so they're valuable assets to the city that I think should be protected. We should go as far as we possibly can to protect them and I like the version of this ordinance that does that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pat, would you like to speak now on this issue? Okay, come forward. State your name for the record, please.
Tricia Dandy, One Eleven South Beach, Moving Place. I might just think of a minor suggestion. I think I'm all for anything that we can do that would enhance the city and trees certainly do it. Might be looking for trees that do not have a lot of surface roots that would help eliminate some of the problems with the concrete. Maples are notorious for having the surface roots. They're beautiful, you know, on the ball and that, but you do run into bad problem. And kind of contradictory, I don't know where you would use it, but wouldn't it be great if we could have like, in a park area where there wouldn't be concrete need to work about, sort of global Japanese maples? I mean, they do so well in this climate and it's coming from the Midwest where you could never grow anything. I was envious of any, you know, seeing these things and they're just so gorgeous. So, that's just my take on it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Anybody else want to speak specifically to this issue? Seeing that, coming forward, thank you very much. Commissioner Olson, did you want to weigh in on this subject?
Yeah, of the two sentences, I guess I would probably go with the first one. I think if you start getting into who's going to determine the benefit of a green infrastructure, you might move to a little bit of, I'm a tree hugger from way back, so, you know, if you get that element too involved in infrastructure, it's more important, you know, the sewer, water, things like that. I think the public works needs to be able to make a decision when they need to make the decision. So, I would err on its side, just to not impinge those gates from keeping care of the infrastructure.
And I would add that I am in 100% agreement with Commissioner Olson on this subject, that if public works says, look at, this root is not going to work, it's bent from the sidewalk, we got to, then, but if not, if it's a simple adjustment, then we could probably see that. So, I would probably support that public works has the right to say yes or no on a particular tree. Yes, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, Public Works Director Greg Clark. The mission here certainly is not to take down wonderful trees, but certain trees are planted in sometimes very bad locations from the standpoint that right underneath them are big water lines and other related things. My suggestion might be is my team finds trees that are in locations that are concerning, that we monitor those closely. If it's just a matter of replacing sidewalk and, you know, we decide that that's the way to go to save a nice big tree, then I'd be all for that as well. But it's primarily the infrastructure that lies beneath that is my concern and stormlines, other things that are being impacted. A lot of trees, you know, once they get pretty heavily established, they're big and that, you can't do much to move them or anything. So, maybe there are certain locations where it would make sense to every 20 years or whatever that interval is, to maybe replace the tree in light kind so it doesn't get so big in order to maintain the spacing and other things on a tree that, say, is like on our downtown corridor of railroad or whatever. I'm willing to work with Steve and work with the commissioners to certainly save any tree we can. But my concern obviously is all the, you know, network of pipes and infrastructure we have below that, once a tree gets certain size, it just sometimes needs to be replaced in a smaller variety. We have some new techniques and there's some fabric and other things that can be used, other containment things that we use below grade and stuff to maybe, once we replant the tree, minimize how it's, what's impact with the infrastructure. Anyway, that's all.
Okay.
Some information on it.
Okay, and it sounds like I am in a minority here because I would like to see individual trees valued for themselves as well. And I don't necessarily always trust public works to determine which trees need to come out.
They own the chainsaw.
So, I think there needs to be a balance there because public works notoriously does not like street trees, so.
There might be a compromise. Can you rewrite that? The part where it says that the tree, you know, so that, bottom line, public works is to say that public works has the right anyway? I mean, so on, should there not be a middle road on that?
There is a provision in the scope in section 030 that describes who's the primary point of contact depending on where the trees are. And this says in part A, trees on roadside, on lands managed by the Metropolitan Park District, removal, pruning, and planting shall be subject to this policy and with approval of the Metropolitan Parks, as we're looking at. Trees managed by the City of Shelton for street or stormwater management purposes, the removal and trimming and planting of ours are those subject to the Public Works Department. And the last portion is trees that may be within the critical areas are in my department. So, they've kind of given pretty different, well, depending on where it is. If it's on a steeply sloped area, they might be looking for planning to make that call. So, we sort of have this hierarchy of who's the primary point of contact.
Well, sounds good to me. Yeah, I mean, I'll go, I'll probably go to the way on this, so, I mean, you know. I think it covers on both bases, I mean, you know.
So, what I'm, Your Honor...
Yeah.
What I'm hearing, the two different perspectives are that the, here that Commissioner Olson is saying it's a decision that the staff will. I think what Commissioner Moore is saying, that if you're going to take out a tree, there needs to be some kind of policy decision. And perhaps there's a, perhaps the compromise that you just suggested might be that public works can do it according to a specific standard. So, that way, if they, if they don't do it the way that the commission has decided and they're violating the policy, they're in trouble. So, maybe that's the way, maybe that's the way you can have it both ways. Or alternatively, you can just say every time you take out a tree, you have to make a decision at the, you know, public meeting by the city.
Yeah, I don't think that's good.
As I said, I'm obviously in the minority and it's kind of funny because you are laughing and Greg's over there, I can hear his eyes swirling because I have been fairly outspoken about, don't cut down a tree unless it has to come down because they do have value.
They do.
So, and part of this maybe will be remedied when we have a tree inventory of city-owned trees. Then at that time, that could definitely be, the policy could be put in place as far as when these trees need to be replaced or when they can be replaced or under what circumstances. So, I believe that is in our future, is to have an inventory of our city-owned trees.
So, am I understanding clearly that we have a form of concurrence which would mean that we could have a first reading on this if we strike the deal that the tree has the same weight as an infrastructure? So, your paragraph in there, you know, that you put in there, that we take that out?
Certainly.
Okay, so, I guess, can we do that before we have a first reading?
Whatever you prefer. We can bring this back so you can see the file language.
Okay, well, we do have time on this, this isn't a rush, rush.
Not early, no.
But we are the existing commission, so, you know, I mean, I'm open to go along with it if we take that one statement out.
Well, and with the understanding that it will be re-entered somehow, rewritten, the rest of the ordinance, yes, I'm fully in favor.
I think we're for all of it except for that one paragraph. And then we can talk about how that would be considered. So, I guess, are we ready for a first reading, striking the paragraph about the tree having the same value as the infrastructure? Okay. We're ready for a first reading?
Ordinance number 1876-1115, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington relating to the protection and preservation of trees in the City of Shelton, establishing Shelton Municipal Code, Chapter 12.22.
Okay, thank you. Next is a, it seems to be, we're going to have somebody joining the Shelton Poverty Advisory Team. And Mr. Goins again is going to talk to us about that.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. We have a citizen who's requesting to be appointed to the Shelton Poverty Advisory Team. This is Carolyn Grabett Bowles. She is a former Shelton Schools Board member and she has been pretty involved in the community's activities for several months. And she formally submitted something, actually a few weeks ago, I'm just kind of getting around to getting around her now, but our recommendation would be to make the appointment and make it effective January for a three-year term, which is pretty clean and easy in terms of, you know, when her term begins and ends for everybody concerned as well, so, that's our recommendation.
Yeah, I'm for it.
Carolyn will be an excellent addition.
I would move that we appoint Carolyn Grabett Bowles to the Shelton Poverty Advisory Team for a three-year term commencing January 2016.
Okay, there's a motion. Second. All of them in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then the last item under new business is a budget modification. And it's talking about our downtown visioning process. And again, this is another item Mr. Steve Goins is going to talk to us about.
Thank you again, Mayor and Commissioners. As you're aware, in terms of background, the city worked with the consulting firm Portera to complete the downtown vision plan in October of this year. This work was funded in part by the city, in part by the Chamber, and in part by Green Diamond Resources. When the city entered the contract, there was a discussion about how to pay for that city contribution. The discussion was basically to take that out of the strategic fund, but we did not specifically ask for a motion authorizing that budget modification. Here we are at the end of December and we need to make a budget modification now to incorporate this change into this year's budget. So, our request is that you would authorize the city administrator to make that budget revision.
Okay, and do we know the amount of that?
$18,000.
Okay, questions or comments?
No, I have, I have no questions.
I am a big supporter of what we started and, you know, $18,000 is not a million dollars or $10 million. I think we need to follow through with the agreement that we have with Green Diamond and the Chamber of Commerce, so, and again, I am a supporter of looking at that plan and implementing that plan to help our city. So, I would support this. It doesn't look like, do we need a, we don't need a motion, just we can...
Yes, we do.
We do need a motion, all right. So, do we have a motion?
I would move that we authorize the city administrator to make the necessary budget revisions for the downtown visioning plan.
I would second that motion.
There was a motion and a second, any further discussions?
Downtown Visioning Plan, is that what you're saying, Kathy?
For the 2015 budget.
2015 budget, that's added to that motion. Motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, that motion passes. Thank you. Next is an administration report and this is going to be talking about our abatement strategy update.
I'm going to make this presentation from up here.
Oh, video.
I have a video aim.
All right.
And I know the room isn't set up real well for everyone to see this, but we'll do the best we can. As you know, we embarked on this, the bidding strategy, I think dating back to 2011, 2012. This sort of summarizes the things we're trying to accomplish in this effort, that we want to facilitate the removal of dangerous structures. We had particularly some structures in town that were a hazard, an accident could happen, a fire, different things. And so we were trying to, first of all, look for public safety. We're looking for ways to strengthen our ability to deal with light in the community and make code revisions that would make that a little easier for us to combat that, to consider different ways to encourage proprietors to maintain their properties. This light was one of those many tools that we were trying to utilize, to use proactive measures to help with redevelopment in our community. And in part, I think what we were seeing was some of these properties seem to be a deterrent for investment opportunities around them, as folks would look and see those as something that maybe would hinder their ability to maybe make as much money on their investment as they hoped and to...
And I know the room isn't set up real well for everyone to see this, but we'll do the best we can. As you know, we embarked on this, the bidding strategy, I think dating back to 2011, 2012. This sort of summarizes the things we're trying to accomplish in this effort, that we want to facilitate the removal of dangerous structures. We had particularly some structures in town that were a hazard, an accident could happen, a fire, different things, and so we were trying to, first of all, look for public safety. We're looking for ways to strengthen our ability to deal with blight in the community, and make code revisions that would make that a little easier for us to combat that, to consider different ways to encourage proprietors to maintain their properties, as blight was one of those many tools that we were trying to utilize, to use proactive measures to help with redevelopment in our community. And in part, I think what we were seeing was some of these properties seemed to be a deterrent for investment opportunities around them, as folks would look and see those as something that maybe would hinder their ability to maybe make as much money on their investment as they hoped, and to remove those obstacles. And last, I guess, was to try to make the code enforcement efforts more efficient. We have a code enforcement officer that's currently a part-time physician in the city, and to try to strengthen that and utilize it the best we can. So this was the top 10 list, you might recall, we've talked about this from time to time. Most of these top 10 properties have been dealt with, as you can see on the list here. Number three was 628 Eleanor Avenue, that was sort of the hallmark of this year's effort. That property was abated earlier this year. We still have two remaining properties on this list that we're trying to tackle. The 303 South Second is the brick building at Second Grove that probably a lot of people familiar with, we call it the cat house, we call it different things over time. It remains there. And 128 First Street, the old bowling alley building on First Street, are two of the 10 that have not yet been resolved in our list.
Hey Steve, before you go, number 10, that's been restored, not abated.
I think that actually, that may be the wrong address, I think it was two, maybe two.
Oh, you're talking about the one that was behind it, okay, all right. Just wanted to make that.
225, sorry. Thank you for mentioning that, so. This is 628 Eleanor. Folks in the neighborhood may be familiar with what this looked like. It's gone, it's a clean lot now, people aren't living next door to this anymore. That was certainly a success story for this year. You can see from the lower picture, there were people getting in and out of there from time to time, things were happening, and now we're avoiding those potential issues. This building, in our estimation, was pretty dangerous. The prior owner had been excavating under the house to build a basement, it was not to code, I would say is probably an understatement. An earthquake or something could have brought this house down. This is one of the two remaining structures, this is 303 South Second Street. We had this building pretty secure at one time, that's been breached. We've been working with the police and others to try to maintain some security in this building. We don't have a very cooperative owner in this case, and because it's a brick building, the tibbage fees for hauling off are pretty high, it's been a struggle for us to deal with, but we're still looking at our options here and weighing different ways we can address this. We did have someone come in the building department, I think in the last week or two, just wondering what was going on with the site, there might have been some interest in rebuilding the site. Of course, this is the one probably where most of me are with, this is the old bowling alley building on First Street. We have been trying to monitor how much funds remain in the abatement program, and assess whether we have the funding to abate this building in 2016. And I'll have to give you an update on that in the coming weeks, but certainly that's an objective of ours. We were attempting to minimize the cost by trying to salvage a lot of material in this building, there seemed to be some pretty valuable wood in it. Some of it's pretty marginal in terms of how you can save it. The two-bys tend to be something that's less desirable for folks that are in that world. A lot of the wood on the floor, the lowest level, is more four-by-six-by heavier timbers, but a lot of that has beetles and other bugs in it, it's less desirable for different reasons. So our ability to save some costs here through repurposing some of the wood's been minimized, but we're still looking for ways to minimize the cost here. In this case, we have a very cooperative owner, and we're trying to discuss the best way to approach that. These are some of our ongoing activities. You may recall, beginning of the year, we created a new top 10 list, and of that list, we've been discussing with the owners, different ways we can help abate or, in some cases, rehabilitate buildings, and we're getting some success on that, I'll probably report on that the next time I come back to you. We still take cases on a, basically, a complaint basis for new cases. We're dealing with some new cases now, there's some pretty significant cases that we've been dealing with that crop up. We have some old cases that we're having to revisit. Some of these were cases where we had some blight or some sort of public nuisance, where there was a voluntary compliance agreement set in place between the owner and the city that would give them a certain amount of time to come into compliance. Some of those have been more successful than others, and we're having to spend some staff time revisiting those. We're hoping that soon we can sell the Washington Street property that we secured, and roll some of that money back into the abatement program, as sort of a way to increase revenues and through cost recovery. There are some other properties out in the city that are coming up for tax sale and for different things that may be an opportunity for us to look at. One of those is a property that we did abate a couple of years ago, maybe not an opportunity to recover some of our costs. And lastly, we've been meeting with different folks to try to figure out ways we can rehabilitate some of the homes in town for the purpose of making them reoccupied, provide some affordable housing for folks in town. So we're having some inroads in those discussions too, so we're trying all these different things, and I think predominantly, it's been, it's been pretty successful. And we're hoping that this year we can abate the bowling alley building, maybe get some more revenue in from property sales and keep the program moving along. I don't know if you have any questions for me, that completes my report.
Steve, there's a house over here on Railroad Avenue that we had problems with hoarding on the site, subsequently a fire where somebody was killed. Is that on your radar?
That's one of the voluntary compliance cases, and we're revisiting that one now. The fire has complicated that, but yeah, we're trying to assess how, what our next steps will be on that, certainly one that's been a priority to the department.
The brick building you're talking about, are the bricks salvageable, or?
I guess not, because your comments, just curious. The bricks are salvageable and perfectly usable, the problem is the labor cost in chiseling off all the mortar makes it pretty cost prohibitive to sell the bricks. Somebody that wanted the bricks and was willing to invest the time in doing that, yeah, that's great, but it's pretty labor-intensive work.
Okay. Steve, I would say, in my opinion, this is probably one of the best programs that the city ever embarked upon, because it has win-win-win all the way, and if the real estate market picks up, we have an opportunity of having a mechanism that comes in and cleans up this city self-funding itself. Because when we abate these properties and we sell the lots, we then have money back in to abate more properties, to sell the lots. And that's the good part, because it has its own funding source, and we can take and prove our community. So I was really, I hate to see this, this program having to be defunded, but, you know, too much. But as money, we sell these lots, it is a self-funding source, and it could be a great program to continue on. And I want to thank you for your work on it, I think it's really going to help the visual aspects of our city.
Steve, I have a question on the property on Railroad Avenue, what teeth does the city have? I believe that's still occupied haphazardly on the outside, and they're still using city utilities there.
Our understanding is the building is not occupied, that would probably change the answer of the court. We have the voluntary compliance document in hand, so we can go back to the judge and see if the judge can sort of set some new guidelines for how and when that would be accomplished. We did fear that that might be a problem with these voluntary compliance cases, because we didn't want to set up something where we're constantly having to revisit that, but in this case, that's what it's turning out to be. It was in pretty good shape there for several months, actually before the fire, but over time, it's sort of, the stuff outside has reaccumulated, and you can kind of see what's happening. I don't believe the building is occupied though at this time.
I worry about is we, you know, potentially embark on our visioning process to clean up the corridor, that, you know, until you get some teeth in there, that makes some more forceful compliance. You know, why do you want to spend money beautifying a street all the way out to, you know, county line there with properties like that there? It makes no sense. I don't think that it'll attract people any more than there already is. You know, you're going to spend a million bucks or five million, whatever it takes to beautify a railroad to the freeway, when it's in poor shape out there. You know, I don't know how you're going to accomplish that, and I don't know that you're going to get a lot of public support in spending money on railroad until you, you know, have some sort of mechanism to force that issue, I guess. I just think it's a real concern, not only on railroad, but throughout town, that this abatement process is, is great, but it just, you just don't see a lot of voluntary compliance, and it doesn't seem to have any, we don't seem to have any teeth in it, you know, to force it. There's lots of properties that are blighted, they just continue to be blighted, so I'm worried about that.
Ultimately, our, I guess the teeth we have is to get in order to come in and abate it ourselves, that's sort of the last resort, certainly, and we have to have the funding and the resources to do that, but that's the endgame.
Maybe a policy or some sort of a condemnation process, especially in a burnt house, it's not salvageable or structurally uninhabitable, that there should be a process to give them enough time for you to take the initiative.
I'm not sure that we need more policy, I think we have policy.
Need some that we can force, I guess.
Well, we just, basically, we need more money.
The money to do it.
More abatements are going to cost more money. And I think you're right, I think there are some folks that are just not going to cooperate.
Look how long that one said across the library.
I know. And when we put the money into it, we were able to resolve it, and put money and time. So we have to have staff that processes these things, and you have to have the dollars that will be in the abatement, and it's going to take, it's going to take both, so. But to our credit, I mean, look at the success.
Eight out of 10.
Yeah, look at the success we've had thus far, but, you know, but in order to do what you want, it's just going to take more cost.
At this point, I had turned this over to Mr. O'Leary, I think, to talk about something, is that just what you just did?
I think that I'll save my comments for the second part.
Okay.
For the Metro Park.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Steve. I was going to thank you up there, and you just transported over here. Next, and this is the last general public comment, anybody like to speak something now, we have three minutes time here. Marilyn, you already spoken, and you already signed in, but we will let you come back, okay? Anybody else, please come and sign this statement if you want, you're new, and so, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, vote for 420s Popper. And I want to speak to the presentation Steve just gave, because it seems to me there's a contradiction in policies. When our city permitting city staff takes time to go out to a new building site, takes time to talk and work with developers, we charge permitting fees, because the department is supposed to be self-supporting. When I built a fence when I first moved here, the permit cost seventy-five dollars, because two people had to come out to my property one time to see where I had laid out the line for the fence. And yet, when you talk about abatement houses, people are visiting those, they're looking at them, they're working with owners, and we don't get anything back until we sell that property. Some cities have taken the approach of requiring a permit for vacant buildings. That allows them to be inspected, allows city staff to take the time and be reimbursed for it, and if our permitting building department is self-sustaining, then we need to institute some kind of program that will require owners of vacant buildings to pay the cost of those buildings staying vacant. And that cost is tremendous. They discourage development. My neighborhood is providing much less revenue than it used to because of the vacant homes. Last year, 2015, my house was assessed at fifty-three percent of what it was when I bought it four and a half years ago, and the assessor's office said it's neighborhood. There were six vacant homes in a two-block radius. And so the city got six hundred dollars less in property taxes from me because of those vacant homes. They cost tremendously in appeal of the city, they cost tremendously in the revenue the city gets, and we need some way to recoup that money simply because they're vacant. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Catherine.
In December of 2014, the City of Shelton got a letter from a waste action project threatening the city with a lawsuit in connection with the C Street dump.
Oh, you, okay, excuse me just a second. We're, we're in a lawsuit situation right now, I believe, and so I always want to be careful, just, you can stay there, just be careful on what we say. If you're looking for statements from us, I'm just playing the lawyer here, we want to be careful how we respond. You can say whatever you want to say.
I'll just give you a timeline.
Yeah.
For 12 months, you guys didn't do anything, and they filed a lawsuit on December 21st in federal court. You can't say anything about it, let me say something about it. I'm a citizen of Shelton, I'm a taxpayer, I live here. You guys are my commissioners for the government operating my, my city. For a year, you obviously did not do sufficient work, if any, to ameliorate a lawsuit. These people are asking that the City of Shelton be fined thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per day per violation. Think about that, when you talk about not having money for abatement, not having money for porta-potties, not having money for things, how did we get to the place that we allowed these people to file this lawsuit? I'm glad you're going, because, you know, these people are going to be held accountable. So get ready to deal with this, and please, please ask Legal to be at the next public meeting, because we would like an explanation, and if you can't comment on it, and Legal can't comment on it, then we have a serious problem between our government and our citizens. So I hope Legal can come and give us some points and direction in connection with this lawsuit. Very unfortunate, and I.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Now, I will speak to that a little bit, I won't speak exactly about the legal ramifications, but I will say this. Probably two years ago, I was approached about the C Street dump, and we, the City Sheldon, took it upon ourselves to respond to cleaning that up, okay? I voted, along with these two commissioners, to start a process in conjunction with the Department of Ecology to clean the C Street dump up, okay? So when you say, or when I heard that we've done nothing, then, then what we need, but I'm talking right now, what you have to understand is, we are aware of all kinds of things, and we vote on all kinds of things, and we have taken steps in the, in the, in the direction of cleaning that dump up. We are in the process of doing that. And that, I would say, don't believe everything that you read, because we can ask Mr. O'Leary, please, I'm the mayor, so I can go longer. We can ask Mr. O'Leary if, and we voted, Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Olson voted to clean the C Street dump up and to take money that we did not have to do that, okay? We are in the process of that, and that's been going on for a long time. That's my perception, is that what we've been doing?
Sure. I would add that, I would add that it takes, that any lawyer can, can file a lawsuit regardless of the, of the facts that they want to argue against. So the fact that there's a lawsuit doesn't, doesn't mean that we haven't done what we're supposed to do in order to be able to do right. I think that's probably okay to say.
That's good enough, yeah.
That's a nice statement, but I don't quite buy that.
Okay, okay.
We have their lawsuit.
Hey, hey.
We have no actually.
Hey, hey, you have a three-minute time period, and your time period is up.
Yes, well, you spoke in my three minutes, now I'm speaking yours.
And I said, thank you for your comments, we have responded to you, and we have responded correctly. Okay, so, at this point, being the chair of the meeting, and wanting to get along with everybody here, what we're going to do is move forward with the next.
I'd like to make a comment.
Absolutely.
I think that there is some merit in what she's asking to have Legal here to give a response from the city, because everything now that you're getting is strictly through the media, and it's pretty much a canned statement. So I, I'm not opposed to having Legal here if, if, if that will help, you know, not be so hidden away, we're not trying to hide anything.
I think it would help.
You know, I don't have the ability to make that decision anymore, but I think it's worthwhile.
We've had Legal here at different meetings at different times for different issues, and so, it's not like we don't. and so it's not like we don't do that. Nothing in my world has been given, basically, but people imagine a lot more than what is reality, and the reality is, we are moving forward with the process to clean the C Street dump up, dump up. So, we can talk more about this, absolutely, we welcome public comment, and so, moving on, from this is any administration final touches. Touches, hit the key.
I just wanted to remind everyone that we are having a reception for Commissioner Olson on the 20, on 31st at 3:00 P.M. So everyone, somebody, come back and share some of the things with us.
All right. Our next meeting will be Monday, January 5th, at 6:00 P.M. in the evening, this meeting's adjourned.
Ah, but stay tuned.
Stay tuned, we have another meeting coming up.